It's five o'clock and I'd like to call this meeting to order. We'll start with a moment of silence and the pledge led by Ms. Christie.
Face the flag. Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I don't believe there are any elected officials out there. Is Stephanie Welch still here?
There she is.
Oh, thank you. Oh, and thank you, Stephanie Welch, our county city councilman and Randy Smith, our county commissioner. Thank you all for being here and joining us. Quick announcement, board members, our TSBA Day on the Hill will be held in Nashville Monday, February 18th through Tuesday, February 19th. And if you'd let Terry know as soon as you could, if she'll be attending, she'll take care of a reservation for us. I believe, Ms. Cottney, that February 19th is also the night of, is it a tenure celebration? But I will tell board members that if you choose to go today on the Hill, it is possible to leave early enough to get back for that celebration if you choose to. You just will not sit in on as many committee meetings. So please do as you please on that, but let Ms. Cottney know. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. Can I have a motion to approve?
No, no.
Second. Thank you. Agenda approved. Mr. Thomas, our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of board, just a few updates since we last met. Trina Burns, Assistant Principal, Pond Gap Elementary has been selected as a fellow for the 2019 cohort of the Governor's Academy for School Leadership. The Governor's Academy for School Leadership is a unique partnership between the Tennessee Governor's Office, Department of Education, Vanderbilt University's Peabody College, and local school districts. It consists of a cohort of 20 to 25 assistant principals from across Tennessee who participate in one-year leadership development experience aimed at increasing school leadership capacity and supporting individual growth toward becoming a highly effective building principal. The mission of the program is to prepare a cohort of transformational school leaders who will improve school effectiveness, performance, and unlock educational opportunities for all students. We congratulate Ms. Burns on being selected for this prestigious program and confident that she will represent Knox County well. I have appointed Mr. Ryan Dillingham as the new Transportation Director. He will be replacing Dr. Rick Grubb, who retired in September 2018. Ryan joined Transportation Department in 2005 as a time card employee and was quickly selected as a full-time special education router. For the last 18 months, Ryan has served as a Transportation Operations Manager, and we're very confident that Mr. Dillingham will do an outstanding job as Director of our Transportation Department. Paul Kelly Volunteer Academy will host a ribbon cutting at their new Lincoln Park Center at 2:00 PM on Thursday, December 18th. Later that day, they will host a graduation at 6:30 PM in the Fulton High School Auditorium. Schools will be closed between December 24, 2018, and January 7, 2019. Central Office will be closed December 24 through 26, 2018. Madam Chair, members of board, this concludes my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the board on the report? All right, we are moving on then to Internal School Funds Audit Report. And I'll turn the chair over to Garrett. Whoops. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair, board members. I'm just going to let Ted introduce. He's with Pew CPAs. He's the partner over the audit this year, and I'll let him introduce it and get to it. And if y'all have any questions, I'll be here to assist.
Thank you. Thank you. Please step forward. I apologize.
Thank you very much. We are certainly glad to be here and certainly glad to assist in our role with the schools. Pew CPAs, I have with me today also Gary Mitchell, who's the audit manager on the job, and Catherine Ross, who is the day-to-day in charge of the job. So I also have help as well with their questions that I can't personally answer myself, but I appreciate their efforts, along with Garrett's and Heidi Murray's with the schools and, of course, the bookkeepers and principals that have helped throughout their audit. From a summary standpoint, I believe you have a draft copy of the findings, which is the part that gets the primary discussion. I will give you an overview of what the total report will have. We have the total report, the full report, which is like 350, 400 pages, and that includes a schedule, a balance sheet, and an income statement for all approximately 90 schools. So that detail will be in the final report, along with other schedules that are required in an Internal School Funds Report. Just as a summary, just for clarification, the Internal School Funds Report basically covers monies that are spent directly at the individual school level, would not include any monies that are spent at the central office. So this is an audit of all the individual schools, and we issue a report on that. With that in mind, we have in our audit report, there'll be a two- or three-page opinion, and it's going to be the standard opinion report, so it's the appropriate report. It's worded funny, if you take a close look at it, but it follows the manual, well, the Tennessee State Manual. So anyway, it will be the standard report. There will not be, it won't be, it's your modified clean opinion, but it's the appropriate report. From a numbers perspective, just as information, the total cash held at the schools at June 30 of 2018 approximated $10.6 million. So, you know, a healthy amount of cash that's held at the schools at the end of the year. And from a comparison, from a transaction standpoint, your total receipts and dispersments were approximately $21 million. So, you know, $21 million is received and approximately $21 million is expended during the course of the year between these funds. So while they consist generally of a lot of small transactions, there are a lot of small transactions, and they amount to significant dollars, and that's why. And they're often, you know, in small schools that have limited ability for segregation of duties or limited ability for controls. So that's what the importance of the audit is for, just so there is outside oversight and testing of these type transactions. I'm going to move forward and talk about the findings now. We had approximately, we had 13 findings this year. There were 12 findings last year. From an overview standpoint, some improved, some regressed a little bit. Probably were in a pretty similar position overall for 2018 as we were for the year ended 2017. One issue got corrected. There was a finding last year on BEP funds, and that was corrected. So that will not be in this year's report, and there'll be a schedule of prior year findings, the status of prior year findings, that'll show as corrected. There are two new findings this year. One has been around for many years, went away in 2017 and reappeared in 2018 regarding negative fund balances, which I'll talk about a little more in a moment. And the other dealt with unclaimed property or as cheats rules, where checks are being held for, beyond state limits. So those are the two new findings as a reference for you. The negative fund balances is number two. They'll be labeled as 2018, that's the year of the audit, dash 001 through 013. The fund balance is number two, and the unclaimed property is number 13 as a reference. Instead of going through all of the findings, I want to talk about three or four that I consider to be more significant, but by the same token, I certainly answer any questions that you have about anything that's in the draft report. And the ones I want to specifically talk about, first of all, is number one, which is segregation of duties. And this is of the utmost importance just from the standpoint that if you do not have controls in place, you don't have checks and balances. And we document this as a finding, and it is, but, you know, some schools, it's very difficult to satisfy requirements for segregation of duties because you have to have enough people in a small school, particularly a smaller elementary school, that that's virtually impossible to do. Doesn't, you know, still means you need to be cognizant of the risks associated with that, but, you know, at a larger high school, I think it's much easier to put controls in place than a smaller school. And I know this is an area that Garrett is focusing on. In this area, we actually saw improvements because a year ago, we had roughly 80 schools of the 90 that had this exception, and this year, I believe, we're down to 68. So, excuse me, 63, 63. So there is improvement, and I can tell that there is a focus, and I commend the schools for that. And for some of the ones that don't have appropriate segregation of duties, I know there are these steps in place that they're probably as good as they can be. This will not go away, but I think it's always important to realize that because this is where your real risk is in the schools. Because if no one's checking behind, then there's just no checks and balances, and things are more prone to be an issue. Another one I want to discuss is number two, which is the negative fund balances, which has come back. And basically, this is where an individual fund has a negative balance at the end of the year, which means they overspent that line item. And they really borrowed into reserve restricted cash to be able to do so. So, you know, this is a monitoring matter, and we had nine instances, nine schools that had this issue this past year, and that's really higher than it should be. That's an area that I would like to see schools improve on in the coming year. Another area to look at is number three, dispersments. You know, between receipts and dispersments, that's virtually all your activity. We had, we test samples, and in our samples, we had 64 schools that had issues with dispersments, with really a matter of proper approval of so forth, or different matters that are listed in the condition section in finding number three. So that went up from 51 schools the year before, so that's an area where we had more issues in 2018 than 2017. But again, the controls over that area and checks and balances and making sure we have the appropriate documentation, many of these are documentation issues, so it's not like it's missing money, but if you're, you know, if you have more issues with documentation, then you have a little higher risk. And then really last I want to mention is number nine on school support organizations. We had several schools that had school support organizations that conducted fundraisers without the authorization of the director of schools or their designee. So, you know, generally, a school support organization's not going to have the same controls in place that the schools will. So, yeah, I consider that a risk area, and I know it's an area that's been discussed.
At length?
Yes. So I encourage the schools to continue to work in that area. You know, we have other matters that we've listed here. All the other ones have been, have been repeats from years before. I do want to clarify one thing. You know, we can have issues at, say, four or five schools out of 90 in an area, and we have to write it up. So that's why you're going to have repeat findings. I know Garrett has a list of which schools had repeat findings in areas that he can convey at another time, or if there are specific questions regarding that. But findings, you're going to have them. What I think is relevant is the degree you have them and what you try to do to improve controls and improve checks and balances. From an overall timing standpoint, we, the full report in all 400 pages is just about ready in draft form, and we will share that with Garrett and with school administration. The report is due to be filed with the state by December 31st, and we fully plan to meet that. Once the full report is available, you know, we will also obviously share a copy with you. And again, the focus of the report generally is in the findings area, but still, you're going to find relevant information when you take a look at the full report and look at the individual schools' balance sheets and the summary balance sheets and income statements. So certainly, if you have questions, I'll be glad, I would be glad at that point in time to address them. But also, don't want to bring the full 400-page report unless get lost in the details of that without looking at the big picture, so. Anyway, are there any questions?
I have one question.
Yes.
When you were talking about some of the school funds ending in a negative balance.
Yes.
Is this a situation where, like, a line item transfer can occur or from another fund, or are they actually in a true deficit for the school?
It would be a deficit for the line item. It really wouldn't be caused by a transfer. It'd be caused that your beginning year of balance in that area, let's just say it's a seventh grade class or class of 2019, has the beginning of balance plus its receipts, but its expenditures are greater than those two balances. So they're overspent at that point in time, or like a teacher welfare fund, that nature.
All right. I guess, and I was not clear in my question.
Okay, sorry.
If it's a, if a singular fund is at a deficit, are there other funds within that school so that at the end it balances at zero? Or do they actually close out everything put together in a deficit?
The total of all funds is positive at all schools.
Okay, okay. That's, that was.
Yeah.
That was what I was trying to find out. Thank you.
Sure. Sorry, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
And certainly, when you have the final report, if you have additional questions at that point in time, be glad to answer anything.
All right. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
All right, moving along. TSBA Annual Conference Report. There were several of us that went to the state conference and several of us that went to, actually, some of the same workshops. I do have a couple down here to call on that might have specifics they'd like to speak about. Ms. Owens, would you care to start us?
I was thinking that I was giving more of a report on our conference call from Friday, but that's okay. I can lump it all together because our conference call Friday was very, very brief.
All right.
Our first conference call was this past Friday, and the purpose was to look at our legislative priorities. And so they were more asking for our input, so there wasn't really a lot to report out on. And Dr. Davis let them know that we had our legislative priorities coming up this week and that we will talk about that. And I also just sort of guessed for them that they will probably not change a lot based on what we've discussed throughout the year, so that they would be similar. One of the main things that we discussed during our meeting with Class, that's our lobbyist organization, during the representative assembly, we discussed vouchers quite a lot. And I've also had an opportunity to discuss that more with TSBA as well as with TEA since that time. And some organizations are expecting them to come out with vouchers very strong in this part of the session, and some are expecting them to wait until the second part of the session, so really, they're just guessing right now. With a lot of new legislators, their goal right now is to really try to reach out and educate our legislators on what vouchers really do. So I think maybe this would be a good opportunity to talk just briefly about that. A school voucher is a publicly funded credit or certificate whereby a student may be enrolled in a private school and apply credit to a tuition. That's public tax money being used for that private tuition. And there are numerous studies that have taken place over the past 50 years to show that there is no greater student achievement in a voucher school or by using a voucher to go to a different school. So there's nothing there that benefits student achievement by using the voucher. In reality, the product of a voucher system is an underfunded public school. So proponents of voucher systems often talk about choice, and the real choice is for the private school. It's not for the student because there are so few who are accepted, so few schools who take vouchers at all, and the private school gets to choose the student. The student doesn't necessarily get to choose that school. Their enrollment policies have restrictions, and private schools are not public institutions, so they have qualifications that could undermine the fundamental ideas of equality in education. They have a lack of special education. Many times, special education students can only find the services they need in public schools, and by further reducing the funds that we have available, that makes that even harder. The Department of Education did a study that concluded that students in a voucher program are less likely to have access to learning support in special needs programs, tutors, counselors, cafeterias, and nurses' offices. So this is something we need to be talking to our legislators about to really make sure they understand how significantly voucher programs can undermine everything that we are working toward. Thank you.
Thank you, and we will discuss that again in just a moment here. And that certainly was a topic that was brought up at the conference. Also, we attended, part of our class meeting did talk about the great change in the legislative makeup that we're going to be seeing with a lot of new legislators, that we're going to have to work on training, so. Was there anybody else that wants to make a comment about the conference? Anything specific that stood out to them? All right, moving right along then. You have in front of you a folder of legislative priorities. I had asked Ms. Cottney to put this together. It's the priorities that we had as a board a year ago, also the priorities that the class grouped, which is our coalition of large school systems, agreed upon, and then also the TSBA priorities. What I'm asking each of you to do in the interest of time is to please review these, and if you have any questions specifically, we can certainly address it Wednesday night, but we will come back in January with a approved list. In fact, I'm thinking if you, if any of you have a strong opinion about what a priority should be, if you would please call Ms. Cottney and let her have that information so we can be sure that the list that we generate is, in fact, what we want our legislative body to see. As far as the timeframe goes, the General Assembly convenes, I believe it's January 7th, and it's typically about a week later before the committee appointments are made and approved, which will coincide nicely with the, with our board meeting and being able to finalize a list of priorities. What is happening right now in Nashville, actually, is bills are currently being written and drafts are coming together. This is part of what the class group does for us, is monitors what they know to be going on right now before it even is introduced. So there is some wisdom in hearing from them right before we put our priority list together, just to be sure there's not anything coming down the pike that we weren't aware about, aware of while we were putting these priorities together. I do anticipate that it will look much like last year's listing, though, so please take a hard look at these. Please let Ms. Cottney know what your priority is, and hopefully we can handle this in a timely manner in January. Are there any comments or questions at this point that anyone would like to move forward with? All right, thank you. Moving on to the discussion of the December 12 regular session agenda, I will be beginning with Item 7C, Items and Contracts. Questions, comments, Item 1. Item 2. Item 3. Mr. Norman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just trying to find just more basic information about what this is and especially why it doesn't cost anything. It raises a concern for me when I see zero.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Oaks, I think is going to take the lead on this, so I'll let him present.
Legit Apps is an application that allows the schools to tailor their presentation of their webpage for their parents. It basically builds on information that we've already published and packages it in a way that they're comfortable with presenting and what they want to present or highlight from their webpage or other various components where they publish information. We had several schools indicate an interest in using Legit Apps. It is paid for through sponsorships that are solicited by the organization that manages Legit Apps, that owns it, that has developed it. Since we started this process, and this is a discussion we need to have with the superintendent that developed this afternoon, the schools have come back to us and said, well, we don't think we've got anybody that wants to use it at this time. So we were going to have a discussion about whether to withdraw this from the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Pfaff?
It might be irrelevant if we're going to withdraw it, but my one question, because I had read it about the sponsorships, was just a concern of, I know so many of our schools and boosters and everybody else are doing sponsorships, that if there was this organization coming in, that there was some talking that we're not all hitting up the same people. But I didn't know if they were more on a national level of sponsorships or if they were soliciting locally.
My understanding is that it's a local solicitation, but, you know, somebody else may have a different understanding of that, but I think at this point, it will become moot.
Other questions? Ms. Owen?
I was just going to ask if we have any information on their track record for gathering data from users. No, they say they don't share it with other people, but they don't really say what they gather from what I could tell.
What they get is what we package or what the schools would package and provide to them, is my understanding. So it would be information that we've already published and put in a public forum someplace. We're just rolling it up so that it's in an app that presents it in maybe a more user-friendly way.
I was thinking more of what they get from the subscriber, because the subscriber would be the student and the parent in that school. So that would sort of be a way of pullback door to get that information.
I don't have any detail on that, but I'll be happy to go back and look at it and we'll.
Only if we do it.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Any other questions, comments? Thank you. Moving on, number four. Number five. Number six. Seven. Ms. Horn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to hear a little more about the number six and seven, or seven and eight, the pre-AP programs and kind of what, what that will look like at the school level and what staff development may go along with that.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Ryswick, if you would, address this, this one forth.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Ms. Horn, the, what we're kind of seeing, if I could summarize that, is AP and the college, and the College Board are trying to, are kind of getting into the same program that we've talked with IB and with Cambridge and some of those kinds of things. It's kind of the new way that, with the early post-secondary opportunities coming. What, what pre-AP is for them are just kind of what they say, the courses that are in high school that aren't currently AP classes, if you think about things in that freshman class, and maybe some of the sophomore courses that are taken, like an algebra class might be a good example. Really what, what they try to do in those courses is prepare students for the rigor that they're going to see in AP classes, so it really is a pre-AP for that. They're taught like those AP classes and just really to try to get students ready for that. You'll see, one of the items talks about what we'd be using for our middle school honors. That continues to be an area that we try to get more standardization across the board and the district, that we have a kind of same expectation for honors across the board. And so, again, Ms. Jackson's not here tonight, but to, she did a great job in order to bring up trainers in as opposed to us sending people out, which would have been much more costly. And so that allows every middle school to send some teachers to be trained in the pedagogy and how to get that done, so we can start working on, you know, collectively what our honors program looks like in the middle schools, and we think increase the rigor across the board. That carries over into the high schools as well. Currently, Bearden High School is one that is a pre-AP high school, and then Karns, the other, the item seven Karns and Farragut are two schools that will be adding that to, for this coming year and be able to offer those courses for those students in that freshman and sophomore level. So there's training for teachers, there's access to assessments and access to curriculum that come in that cost, pretty much like what we do for AP already, it's just they're moving it down to some lower grades.
Thank you.
Ms. Bab.
On the pre-APs, are there end-of-course exams that are offered from the pre-AP, AP, or are they teacher-developed?
Thank you, Ms. Bab. There are 45-minute quizzes that are given throughout that. It's not a, it's not a cumulative like what we're used to with an AP, but they are once again to prepare students for that.
Any other questions? Thank you. Moving on, number nine. Number 10. Number nine, Mr. Norman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to ask a couple of questions about this one. Who would it be to?
Mr. Ryswick, can you take this?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, John. I guess first of all, this is all, all these funds are for professional development? Is that true?
They are. NIT is an organization that, they're, they're kind of unique in the way they partner with us, so they don't really, they don't necessarily sell something, so they're not saying, here's what you get for this. They're really kind of more of a think tank around developing, understanding of standards and, and teacher development. That's one part of what they do as far as how to add rigor in, in classes and how to work with groups of teachers for that. They also have a, an element of that that's development for the principals and for the administrative team. What they did for, for us initially is they came in the summer after we talked to the principals about what they would do and really spent some time with each of the principals at those schools, looking at them with their data and with their leadership team, which they brought teachers in as well this summer, to kind of look through what, do a needs assessment of the school, and then really work on individual plans for that leadership team and then for those teachers. And again, these are the schools that are our lowest performing schools academically. So they're walking that out with, Natalie is the, is the trainer that walks us out with the schools and really working again with the principals, working with their leadership team as far as us trying to make sure we have that rigor every day in the classroom. We've had a great response from the principals and from the schools that this has been a great partner with them as they try to work on a more comprehensive plan to build capacity of their teachers and their principals.
Okay, does, does NIT provide some kind of program that is applied to all the schools? Is, is generally the same? Or is it designed by the schools individually? I'm just trying to get a picture of what's done.
That's good. I actually may ask Ms. Thompson to come up and speak to that, because most of those are her schools, and she's worked closely with that in elementary. But I will say, they, they have the same strands as far as working on school culture, working on leadership development, and working on teacher capacity development, but they have tailored those to each of their schools, and I think Ms. Thompson can probably give you some details of, of the work at Lonsdale, Sermore Green, and Green and how that's been a little different at each of those schools.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Thompson, and, and you know where I'm coming from. It's all about this literacy piece and getting off of that 90% thing at third grade level. It's all about that, and for me, anyway. And so if we're spending money, are we spending it in the ways that are going to help in that situation?
Great question, great question, absolutely. So one of the things that I have done, Natalie Zakkus is our person that is meeting and working with our schools, the four, I work with Belmore, Green, Sermore Green, and Lonsdale. And what I have done is every time that she's at those schools, I'm there as well, so I'm hearing what she's saying so I can support the work when she's not there. It started this summer, she met with each school leader and their leadership team and did a needs analysis to see what each specific school needed. The general part of her work is to help the teachers understand the standards and what fully implementing the standards look like, and what does it look like in terms of the assessments of students, the work that students are doing, if they're performing at that highest level of the standard. So we're, we're making certain that we're getting teachers understanding what the standards are asking for, what that looks like in instruction, and then what that looks like in assessment, and then how to go back and look at that assessment and determine where the, the gaps are for the students and, and kind of really drive their small group instruction, their whole group instruction, and individual intervention. So she's, it's not a program as such, it's really designed, each time she comes, she meets with the leadership team, she meets with instructional coaches, she's doing walkthroughs, she's meeting with each of the administrators, and she's there typically a day for each school, sometimes it's a half a day, but it always includes a debrief with the principal, sharing what she has seen and suggestions for the next visit, things that they can do to prepare and really help grow their coaches, grow their teachers in their PLCs, in their grade level planning, that sort of thing. So, yeah, it's been highly beneficial. I've been very impressed with, with the work that she's done with the schools, but really how she's very talented at crafting questions to really get principals and teachers and coaches to think about the work that they're doing in a very deep level and, and making sure that they're meeting the needs of their students, and, and really to eventually be able to have them change their practice so that she's not needed to be there. And, and really, and, and then my part of that is to follow up as the, the principal supervisor, just following up with the things that she talks about, the things that the principals and, and teachers and coaches talk about their work, just to make sure that that's a continual thing. It's not just a, a one-time event. We want it to be something that's going to be systemic and, and really change practice over time.
Good, thank you.
All right, seeing no other questions, looking at number 10. Ms. Horn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just wondering if we can have some explanation on what, what the assessment of the climate measure will include, and just a little background on that.
Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. The climate survey will, it will assess just the overall, how people view their schools. They'll look at that from the student point of view, the staff point of view, and then the parent point of view, thinking, and it's, and there should be a copy, I think we included, but it's just generic about the safety, how welcoming the school is, do you feel safe in your school, very open-ended kinds of questions that just kind of rate how people feel. The state will provide us with a report that will go back to the district and to the school contact person so that they can kind of plan their goals and activities for any areas that are strong, so that we continue, continue to build on those, and areas that may, need some support so that we can action plan around that.
And that'll be district, district-wide?
It will be for the seven schools that are, that's part of the grant.
Okay.
Yeah, just those seven schools.
Okay.
To be clear, the climate survey would be available if we chose to do it district-wide. The state would let, allow us to do that, but in order to sign up for this grant, the schools had to commit to do this climate survey. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Massey. All right, looking at number 12. 19. And 20. Moving on to board policies. Looking at letter A. B. C. D. E. F. G. H. I. Which I might add for those of you listening, these are all second readings, and J. Ms. Bab.
Make sure I'm at the right place.
Regarding school day.
Yes, looking at that, has there been an addition with the, it seemed like it had changed, where we had added some wording? I mean, I didn't have a problem with it, but it, it sounded like the collaborative conferencing or something like that had changed it.
Yes, I do believe that that did, they did have input on that. Mr. Davis, would you like to address that?
Yes, ma'am. Actually during the last board meeting, I think it was requested by the board that this particular policy go through or be taken to the collaborative conferencing team. We did gather, had a really good discussion. During the discussion, basically, they looked at the policy that was originally proposed to the board, and they saw, saw no conflict in terms of that particular policy, the way it was worded, and the MOU that we have that came out of the collaborative conferencing team. So there was no conflict there. However, they did make some suggestions in terms of some language changes there. Rather, they suggested that we incorporate or have in the wording, teachers and administrative staff, so that was included. And then in terms of the additional time, they sort of took some language from the current MOU, the way it exists, in terms of the different requirements that teachers would have to meet above and beyond their regular contract time. So they wanted that spelled out in there. So those were the two things, to add in the teacher and administrative staff, the language there, and then to pull in or spell out the additional activities that they would be required to participate in, and that is actually spelled out in the current MOU.
So I guess my question, and this is just probably for my personal clarification, are we going to be voting on the final version offered by collaborative conferencing team?
Well, this is the first reading.
Okay, okay.
We will have it again on our agenda next month for final vote. Any other questions? All right, moving on to grants, letter A. Ms. Bab, did you have a question? B. C. D. E. Moving on to item 10, contracts, A. Moving on to regular agenda items. B. Just as a courtesy, I know that we have Mr. Smith out in our audience here. All right. Thank you, Ms. Owen. Please go ahead.
Just briefly on the resolution in opposition to school vouchers, we have passed this resolution several times since 2011. What we have here is basically the same thing. I've just changed the wording, some very minor wording, to try to make it less, less wordy and a little clearer. I also added a line regarding teacher retention. I've talked with our government relations person from TSBA, I've talked with Ben, and also with our lobbyists, and also with TEA, and they all agree that the sooner a voucher resolution can be passed by each board, the better. They strongly recommended that we do it before January. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So that will be on our voting agenda for Wednesday, next Wednesday.
Come in.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Owen had reached out to me today on this particular resolution, and I was in hearings and meetings all day, but we will go ahead and, or my office will go ahead and make one slight change to this resolution in the second paragraph. Ms. Owen wanted to be clear about possible different looks and packages for school vouchers, and another one of those that she brought up was tax credits or tax breaks. So we'll add some language in there as well, but other than that, that would be the only change.
All right. Mr. Norman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm, you know, the, the opposition to, to vouchers is just very logical. I, I would like to bring up the fact also, though, that we have a new governor who has expressed favor for vouchers, and in the process of doing a discussion about this resolution, we might consider that, I don't know who would, who could find information from the governor's office about why or what, or what, what their position is, what any kind of new strategy is as regards vouchers. But if we have somebody in our, within our administration who possibly could find some information about stuff that's coming from the governor's office, I'd appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Norman. That's a good point. I, I do know that, that this is being heavily discussed as we speak. Part of the comment I made earlier about bills being written at this time will, I think, give us a real good feel for a lot of that, too. Ms. Owen?
I was just going to say that I think our, our folks from class and TSBA and TEA are already speaking with legislators and, and have given us a, a pretty good idea of what we can expect. They are expecting quite a lot of voucher legislation to come out. Specifically, they are expecting some changes in what is called. So they're looking at it to not have the word voucher in it, but it still be a voucher bill. And they are also looking, they are expecting more things around tax credits to make it sound like it's sound like it's, you know, just a credit for taxpayers, instead of taking it right out of our education budget. So that's, that's what they have found out so far from our legislators in the governor's office. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. We'll certainly have, I think, a heavily involved legislative session this year. Any other questions or comments? All right, moving to our final agenda items, discussion of the Career Magnet Academy. Mr. Thomas, if you'd take the helm, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. At the last meeting, we talked a little bit about Career Magnet Academy. We listened to a presentation by Principal Han regarding the Career Magnet Academy. And now, we have three new board members that don't have the experience that some of the others have, so I thought maybe it'd just take a few minutes and talk about Career Magnet Academy. And we also talked a little bit about some of the things that didn't develop like we had said they would develop, and just kind of bring those out into the open. But Career Magnet Academy was created as a standalone magnet school on a college campus, and it offered four career clusters, homeland security, advanced manufacturing, teacher preparation, and sustainable living. And students were, were to identify a career cluster pathway by the end of their freshman year, and then expected to take two courses in the cluster their sophomore year. Then by the time they reached their junior year, students should have been prepared to take college courses. And what happened, 50% of the last year seniors were not eligible to take college courses, and this year, 40% of this year's seniors are not eligible to take college classes. So by attending, CMA students were told they could earn up to 33 college credit hours at no cost, and not all the costs to take college credit courses have been covered by the district or by scholarships. So there have been some expenditures on behalf of parents of students who attend CMA. The students were supposed to earn, to be able to earn both a high school diploma and an associate's degree. And then to date, only one student has completed both in the class of 2017-18. And also included in the non-traditional education was the promise of internships, job shadowing, and apprenticeships, and unfortunately, none of these opportunities have come to fruition. Another part of the students' educational experience was to have career exploration field trips. And there have been field trips, but most field trips have been to college campuses, but were not career exploration field trips. For recruitment, the school's accepted interested students from all other 15 high schools, with Pelossepi State taking on a majority of the instruction in grades 11 and 12. Expenses related to classwork, textbooks, were to be covered by Knox County Schools. The majority of the students received all of their instruction from Knox County Schools rather than Pelossepi, and because the students did not meet the criteria to take the college courses in 11th and 12th grade. And initially, a magnet facilitator was hired to recruit students to the school. The first principal was hired in advance of the school opening so that he could visit other schools and hold open houses. So we heard about some challenges, let's kind of briefly go over those. Enrollment, the school was designed to serve 500 students, and it opened in August 14 with a freshman class of 127 students. As of November 17, 2017, there were 291 students enrolled, which represents 58, 58% of the original enrollment target. And enrollment of each class has decreased over time. There are 44 freshmen currently enrolled for the 2018-19 school year. Currently, the transfer period is open right now, and extends through February. And initially, when the transfer period opens, there's usually a large volume of transfers that come in, then it tapers off, and then towards the end of the period in February, it increases. But as of right now, 21 students have indicated a desire to go to Career Magnet Academy from the eighth grade. That recruiting process is still ongoing. So again, enrollment has been one of the challenges. Transportation and location, transportation to and from CMA is offered to interested students, and students are required to ride the bus to their base school, then catch another bus to CMA. And in some cases, students are riding the bus for possibly an hour, hour and a half, which has discouraged some students from continuing to attend CMA. Then there was a limited catalog of course offerings. The offerings available to KCS students were limited to the four career clusters due to the smaller Pelossepi State enrollment at Straw Plains Campus. Course offerings were further limited. Student preparedness to take college courses at Pelossepi, students must reach certain benchmarks typically associated with the ACT. However, many students were not eligible. Approximately 50% of CMA juniors in the class of 17-18 were not eligible to attend any Pelossepi State courses as a result of their combined GPA, ACT score, and placement exam results. Also, the cost, the expense to the district totals about $2.5 million annually, including $176,000 for coursework and $76,000 for textbooks. The total funds spent to date, or through the projected expenditures for this year is a little over $13.9 million since CMA opened. So, you know, we looked, it worked with Pelossepi, folks at Pelossepi, and our CNI folks worked last spring and over the summer to look at the challenges and come up with a redesign, and that's what we heard from Principal Han last, at our last meeting. They wanted to go through a name change process, and then also implement some other changes to, to help the viability of the school. Some of those were like the open transfer, CMA transfers to all students across all grades in Knox County, rather than just ninth graders. Then we worked with Pelossepi State to release career cluster concept and expand course offerings for this next year. Also worked with Pelossepi State to assist students with tuition scholarships, and then continue to work with Pelossepi to expand our partnership to offer further post-secondary coursework. So just to kind of give our new board members some history background on what all has transpired, and what we've done to try to look at next year and take the challenges and see if we can't expand upon what's happened. Also, our research evaluation assessment department did a program evaluation for us last December. Steve Rutter is here. What I'd like to do is just take a few minutes for Steve, just to present that report as it was in December of 17. I think we've, parts that could be updated have been updated through the end of the school year for last spring. So, Steve?
That's right. So this, like Bob did a pretty good job of covering what I was about to talk about. So I don't have a ton of stuff to add to that, other than, this was, our research was conducted by our department last year, right about this time, I think it was December 13 that we released it. And so it was done by one of my colleagues, Clint Sattler, and then, like Bob said, once we knew that this was on the agenda, we released an addendum to that report with updated data that we could gather in the amount of time that we had. So a couple of things I might add to what Bob just said is, one of the things in the report, one of the findings in the report was that enrollment has decreased over the years, and there's a couple of dynamics going on inside of that. One of them is, there's a lot of attrition, right? So when you compare the rate of attrition at Career Magnet Academy to other high schools in Knox County, it's quite a bit higher. So just for example, the class of 2019, they started with 106 students and now has 67 students in it. So that's roughly a 40% loss over four years. The other thing that's going on with enrollment is that we're continuing to see grade level declines, so Bob kind of alluded to that. So the inaugural class at Career Magnet had 101 freshmen in it, and while the current freshman class has about 50 students in it. So the incoming classes are getting smaller, and we're losing them as they're going through. And so a lot, some of that may have to do with the fact that the students, there are certain benchmarks that they have to meet to be able to qualify to take the Pelossepi State courses. Those involve a minimum ACT, minimum GPA, and certain scores on the placement exams that Pelossepi provide. So like Bob said, roughly half of the class of 2018 were, weren't able to take any Pelossepi classes due to, as juniors, because they didn't meet one or more of those benchmarks. So what could be happening is, with the enrollment is, or the attrition anyway, is once students realize they can't participate in those, they tend to go back to their base school. And so the other, the only other thing I would point out that Bob didn't mention was that when you look at, like, the percentage of students who have at least one dual enrollment credit at Career Magnet, it's much higher than the district average. However, when you dig down into that, most of those credits they earned aren't general education credits, they're CTE courses and things like that. So. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Thanks, Steve. I'd just like to say, again, we wanted to have dialogue tonight with the board. Didn't feel like that maybe the discussion, maybe the adequate time was provided, not to the fault of any board members at the last meeting, but I know we've had a couple of board members to visit the school and see firsthand what's happening, so, which is a great thing. If you hadn't been, we'd encourage you to go. But again, what we have looked at and came to you with, to you with last time was what's, some changes we thought that might improve the track record. But then again, the discussion at our last meeting sort of went into what we hadn't delivered, and what the cost is, and that sort of thing. So just wanted to get, in the sake of transparency, get it all out in the open, and then listen to what board members had to say about it, if they have anything to say.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Ms. Fab?
I have a couple of questions. One is, it sounds like a lot of the students are not prepared to move on to the dual enrollments when they're ready. So I'm assuming we're not doing any kind of entry exam to get in, and it sounds like with the number of kids trying to go, there's not a barrier to coming.
I think one thing, and Dr. Ryswick, John, you can help me with this, or Cheryl, but I think Avid was a, was a recommendation that this coming year to Avid, to try to help prepare students for the college courses. So I think in terms of looking at the offerings, we were going to try to do a better job, I guess, of getting the students ready. So I think that was one of the things we didn't talk about, but I believe was in the proposal. I don't know, John, do you have anything to add to that, or Cheryl?
That's correct. It's part of the work done with Pelossepi to think about how we do that. And I think some of it, too, again, original concept, when we talked about, and Bob mentioned this a minute ago, the clusters that were kind of designed around career and tech ed. I think it kind of, and again, just the name of the school is, as Principal Han brought last time, saying, you know, this is really, the future is probably an early college model, and I think the folks, our friends at Pelossepi agree with that. But that wasn't really all clear, and probably the initial model, where it was a lot more about kind of career clusters and that sort of thing. And so I think maybe some of the students initially weren't thinking as much as freshmen about what those demands to get into those courses would be. And Pelossepi's been extremely flexible to try to help us get more and more students into that. So Mr. Thomas is right, that that is what Avid was added this year as part of that, and then also opening up for the, for other grade levels. So if I'm a junior at Carter, or South Doyle, or Powell High School, and I want to go there, I can now do that. I don't have to enter as a freshman, and lots of times, I already kind of know where I'm at ACT-wise. So, you know, again, our hope is that would allow for more students to be able to do that. We haven't seen a lot of transfers yet, but that's, that's part of the plan, to be more flexible.
And I guess one other question I had was, I look at this model as very similar to LNN STEM Academy, and in our community, LNN STEM Academy is very well-known. I mean, anywhere I go, everyone seems very aware of it. Hardly anyone I know has any clue Career Magnet even exists. And I am just wondering, from kind of a PR and publicity standpoint, how well we are communicating out to the community? Because I do think there's a big discrepancy between our two true magnet high schools on how our community knows about them.
Yeah, we, I know they've got a magnet facilitator, person that's gone out, is in the process of visiting all the eighth grade. I'm not sure how many, how many schools they've attended just yet, but out visiting eighth grades, promoting Career Magnet Academy. And beyond that, again, Dr. Ryswick, I don't know if there's anything else that can add to that.
I would, just to say, that has been true. I would say, I think the bigger barrier is probably location, honestly, and Mr. Thomas explained the transportation and how that has to work in order to make it. That's why they have the staggered time at 9:30 for the start, because students have to typically go to the base school to then be picked up on a separate. And so we have had some students who come from different places, and that's kind of been the barrier for them in the long run, is the, you know, hour-plus kind of bus ride. But as far as recruitment efforts, the only school left with a magnet facilitator whose purpose is to recruit is Mr. Mulchan at Career Magnet Academy, who does a great job. It is very, very much out there, the initial year, you know, looking back at things, that principal was brought on a year in advance and worked with those. They have multiple open houses and are very, are out there. I think, again, you know, as you stated, Ms. Fab, LNN's always had a waiting list. I think some of that's been the lure to downtown, you know, kind of the revitalization of that, the historic building. Again, location, because lots of traffic that is there, a little different than what's at Straw Plains. So it's not, not been a lack of effort, or a lack of us continuing to put funds and personnel there to do that. We're always open to want to do, to do more and do better with that, but I think that's been some of the differences in the two schools.
Thank you. Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of comments. One, you know, location could be an issue because of just the actual location of where that campus is, so that would be one question I would have. I'm wondering if, would there be merit, and I'm just, you can, something to ponder, would there be merit in this being a more of an 11th, 12th grade option rather than 9th through 12th? Because then you would know if students would be eligible, or there may be more, more higher likelihood of students being eligible to enter college, those college courses, where you may not know that as an eighth grader, since so many of the students are not ready to enter college classes, and that's part of the breakdown. And then the other question I would have, if these students were going, if they were to just go back to their base schools, would we be saving $2.5 million, you know, $2 million? I mean, would we save the bulk of that money? That would be another question.
Yes, we would save the bulk of that. If the recommendation ends up being to keep it open, we're looking at probably $2.5 million. If we look at a phase-out, which if we are not going to continue the program, probably phase-out and let 11th and 12th graders finish, we could probably save around, I think it's maybe a million dollars or so with that model, and then the next year would be additional savings. We would have to continue with some staff there. But most, and again, I know we've got the volunteer certified retirement incentive, so as folks take that, that's going to open up jobs. So if people feel like that folks could get placed in positions if we were to go to the phase-out model. So if people go from one position to an open position, then that's going to, going to save money. So eventually, the cost, yeah, yes, you would save $2.5 million roughly.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Rick Mellon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess, I don't know, I had several comments that I wanted to make in, in hearing this The, I realize that the location is not ideal compared to, like, the LNN, but it is, you know, right next to the interstate, and, you know, I don't know whether distance-wise, it's too far to draw people from the other side of the county, or whether there's just not that much interest. I do think that, not to be negative about it, and I guess I'm the only board member that's presently here, that was here at the outset. And I do think the concept was, was a very good idea. And I think what happened, as best I can tell, is that the, you can call it miscommunications, you can call it, I mean, there's, there's several things that you could call it, several reasons that we're to the point where we are today, including in some instances incompetence, probably. probably. But I'm not going to get into, you know, that. But there's, the point is that there's, it's, there's quite a bit of blame to go around. The biggest thing that I saw, as I followed it, was the parents and the students were led to believe one thing, and then, you know, maybe it was because they couldn't qualify. Well, if, if, if they couldn't qualify, should we not have made some kind of, like Susan said, should we not have known enough about them to know that they, they wouldn't have a reasonable chance of success down there? Somebody in our system should have been following that. And that's where, you know, that's part of what I, when I make the, made reference to the incompetence. But in order to have any successful program, in my opinion, you have to have all of the participants understand the rules, the expectations, what the standards are, and then you go from there. And I just don't believe that we've done a very good job out there from the outset, and now we've, we've tinkered with it, and I know that, that there, there are two, three people that have, have tried to make some adjustments. But I think one of the things is, and I've told the superintendent this in, in our discussion, I don't think that we've had somebody that was passionate about the program, that fully understood what was going on over there, going to the schools and explaining to the kids, this is what they do down there, and this is what you can expect. Now, you know, in my opinion, if you have somebody, an individual, that, that understands the whole program, come out there and talk to the kids versus, say, a guidance counselor, and I'm not picking on guidance counselors, but it's just not the same. I know at where I used to teach, we had an elective course that every once in a while, the, the numbers would get down, and the lady that taught it would realize that her numbers were low. So, what did she do? She took about 10 minutes out of her planning periods for, for about a couple of weeks, and went around and visited the individual classes. She'd just go in, and, you know, you did things different back in those days. She'd just say, can I, you know, can I speak to your class? Or she usually asked beforehand. But she involved the students, and as a result, she, she got her numbers up. She got, she generated interest, is the point I'm trying to make. And I just don't think that we've done a very good job of, of generating interest out there and tracking the, the right kids. Now, besides that, I, I think that with the new governor and the legislature, the, the governor has said that he's very much interested in vocational education, and I think Mr. Norman mentioned that over there a minute ago, or somebody, somebody did, about that we, we'd like to see more about what, what his plans are in, in the area of education. But in all of his speeches that he, that he made dealing with education, he talked about vocational education and how important he thought it was. And I would hate to see us do something out there premature, until we at least see what, what he's proposing here in the legislature. Of course, he can't do anything without the legislature, but I'm assuming he's the governor, that he'll, he'll get support for, maybe not get all of what he wants, but he'll, he'll get a good portion of it. And I would like to see us, you know, continue the program out there, try to sell the program and get the numbers up, and, you know, and see, see where we can go, and if, you know, if, if it may not fit with what the governor's recommending, and we may not be able to get the numbers up. But at that point, you know, I'll be the first one to say, okay, we need to fold our tent, and, you know. And I can understand what was being said there a while ago. If the kids get frustrated, and when they realize that they're not going to be able to achieve what they thought they were going to, it may be their own fault. But regardless, if I were in that situation today, I probably would go back to my home school, because there, there's, there's more, I would guess, very, a lot more social activities and things at the, at the high school that they were, you know, supposed to attend. Those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr.?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is, we said that there was about half of the students per class weren't eligible to enroll in the Pellicippi courses. So, were those statistics similar when those graduating classes were applying to colleges, like lower ACT scores and GPA? Did that affect them when they were applying to post-secondary education? Were those, like graduation rates and enrollment in post-secondary schools?
I don't know if Dr. Ryswick has an answer or not. Of course, last year's class was the first, first graduating class. I don't know if we've got, Steve, the statistics on that or not, yet.
The post-secondary enrollment wasn't really part of the traditional scope of the report, but what I can tell you is that, I have to look it up, I'm sorry, is that sort of the minimum requirements to take general education classes at Pellicippi State is you have to have a 3.0 GPA and ACT sub-scores of 18 in English, 19 in Reading and Math, and then there's a certain score on their placement exams that you have to get. So, that, that's for the general education classes, the ones that would transfer to any Tennessee public high red institution in the state. So, the 50% we were talking about is a lower standard than that. So, it's a GPA of 2.0, and ACT has sub-scores of 13 in the different subject areas. So, if you're asking, did that impact their admission in certain colleges? I'm sure it did.
Yeah. That's my.
And they may have taken it after this, they could have retaken the ACT after this report was done, so.
Yeah. That was my largest concern, hearing that statistic, is if they can't, if there aren't, if they aren't eligible for dual enrollment in high school, then it would seem that there is also going to be an issue as they're applying to college after this.
I think that's a safe bet.
Thank you, Ms. Sell. Did you get your?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bounds?
Okay, thank you. Just a couple of points. Location was mentioned, and it's really not that far, and it is interstate all the way. But to Mrs. Horn's point, if it was looked at as an 11th and 12th grade program, that opens up the possibility that those students can drive themselves versus a 9th and 10th grader who has to have transportation provided for them. And to your point, Ms. Bab, location could be a factor, but I just tend to think, especially in light of how successful the LNN has been, is that it possibly was more about what was being offered than it was about the actual drive or the location being too remote. Some of those subjects that are offered were originally offered in some of our high schools, such as the education cluster or things like that. So, there wasn't that driving need, that there was not, this could not be met in other ways, I think. And the other thing was that if, to Mike's point, with the new governor, if all those things had been done that were promised, such as the job shadowing and, you know, multitude of promises that were made, I think it would have been more highly successful. So, I don't know what the answer is, but I do think that the model, as you stated, was not a bad model, and if we could just find a way, working with the governor, maybe to redo it to where it's not necessarily those four clusters, but other things that are offered that may work more with industry and things like that, that it might be more successful, rather than the whole promise of college credits and dual enrollment.
Ms. Satterfield?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a great conversation with Principal Han this week about the realities of the school, and to Board Member McMillan's point of the, the advertising and making sure students know, she did indicate that, that, that did happen. And from an adult perspective, I think that we fully understand the benefits of getting college credit in high school and that going into advanced manufacturing or home land security are guaranteed jobs, essentially. I think from an adult perspective, we understand that. But when you go recruit to an eighth grader, I'm not sure if advanced manufacturing, really understanding what that means and how that is able to compete with the fact that high school is the fun, the activities, the football teams, the Go Central Bobcats, and all that wonderful stuff. So, there is a disconnect in that way, but it's our responsibility to make sure that we set up our students for life after high school. So, it's not a matter of scrapping these opportunities. I think it's a matter of how can Knox County be innovative and creative to make sure that we have these opportunities for all of our schools? I know we have some, but because we have such a strong relationship with Pellicippi, I would like to see personally, opportunity for us to really build that partnership even more with Pellicippi. We have schools that have campuses like right down the street. So, how can we create pathways to where those students that go to West High School or go to Austin, these can go to the Magnolia Campus or the Southernland Campus to take classes that CMA basically develops? So, the concept is great. I have a lot of background in, in two-year college as well. The concept is amazing. Maybe the implementation wasn't the best, but I don't think it's a matter of scrapping what has already been built. How can we expand it to all of our kids? Because it does, students there are benefiting. There's a, she was telling me about a student that received A in Anatomy and Physiology over the summertime, which is completely like amazing, but she did a lot of work to make that happen. So, we want to make sure in Knox County schools that that student, her homeschool, I don't know her homeschool, but it might not have been feasible for her to even get that opportunity. So, we need to serve that student as well as the students that will not be able to make the ACT as well. So, that's just my take, is like, I'm interested to see how we can spread this out to all Knox County schools.
Ms. Christie?
Yes, I've visited CMA as well and had a great discussion with Ms. Han, and, and I appreciate the fact that they recognize the mistakes and the miscommunications, and I think that they're working really hard to try to revamp that and fix that. And, you know, I think it can be fixed and saved. I just think that we need to give them the opportunity to do that. And as far as location goes, you know, when you drive by there, you don't even know that's where the school is. I mean, you go on Straw Plains, you see the Pellicippi sign, but you, there's no Career Magnet sign. There's nothing. I mean, people might be driving by that school every day and not even know that there is a high school there.
Thank you. Ms. Bab.
I guess I'd like to say, in kind of continuing on, as we're seeing the state, I think we're going to start seeing a push towards vouchers, which we've seen talked about. I would like us to see more choice offered within Knox County schools, and I think this is one of the ways that we are offering some choice. And I think it's one of the ways that we can show the community that we're offering choice within our own system. However, I think if we're going to do it, we need to get 100% behind it and figure out how to do it correctly, or I agree, it's $2.5 million of low-hanging fruit. It's like, we want, if it's not going to be successful, I think I'm like, Mike, you know, I would say, yes, stop it, but I don't feel like the full effort has been made to be successful. And I think another thing with LNN STEM comparison, they have an identity. I mean, they do, I mean, it's some off-the-wall things, but I mean, the off-the-wall things they're doing it are drawing the kids for the, you know, the whatever frisbee thing it is they do, or, I mean, you know, they're one of the top swim teams. I mean, I think that the school has got to have an identity that their students can be around, that's not what LNN is, or not what anybody else is, and there's got to be some work on developing their identity, that it is a cool place to go, for whatever reason it is. And I, I think that it needs to be a cultural shift at the school. I really think there's got to be some PR around the school. I think, as she said, just a sign out on the, on the street sometimes might help. I just really don't think our community knows a lot about that school, and I think we're talking to students when we go out there, well, these eighth graders, ninth graders are going to have to be driven by parents. This decision is going to be much more parent-driven, I think, at the point where they're making the decision, than kid-driven, and we've got to get, I think, some communication out to parents about what's being offered out there. And I know we say on the website, we've got open houses and things like that, and I'm not sure how to do it, but, you know, I think if it was more, I, I like that thought of opening it up to juniors and seniors, because I can see a whole world of people that might at that point take advantage, not have transportation issues. But I think if we're trying to get some people going all the way through 9 through 12, it's the parent population we're really going to have to hit and talk to them about the benefits to their, to their kids.
Thank you, Ms. Horn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with much of what's been said. I think the concept is good, it's just the implementation that has been a problem. So, and I think one thing that, as we're talking, that I keep thinking about is going back to what Ms. Bab said, that if we're going to do it, we need to do it with 100%, behind it. And I think that we really, a big key to seeing success there and college-ready, or students who are actually successful there, is really looking at the front end, going back to the testing, you know, that we talked about, making sure that the kids that are going there are on track or already ready to be accepted into the program. If they're not, then they need to, they just need to stay at their base school. So, I think that's, that, that is a place that we need to really focus on the acceptance process and what that really entails and looks like, would be my opinion. Thank you.
Ms. Owen.
I like the really positive discussion, and I'm going to take it a different direction. I, I think it's very important to remember that a couple of years ago, the board toured, and we saw fabulous things, and we were told fabulous things about all these wonderful opportunities and all this great stuff going on, and we all came away thinking that we had really seen something great. And as recently as last spring, we started hearing from parents that nothing they had been promised was happening. We started hearing that their hope scholarship money was being used, but that they didn't know it. We started hearing that they had been promised all these course credits that it was literally impossible for them to attain, and while, and Dr. Ryswick did a lot to make things start happening, that we had no idea until that time were not happening. I don't know where the lack of accountability is in all of it, but when you, when you sit and talk to a student who says that he feels like he has wasted three years of his life, and that his senior year, he knows that he is still not going to get what he was promised, that's severe. I, I think it's, while it's great that we want to give a program a chance, there's, there's nothing saying that it has won, because we have nothing and no one being held accountable for what has happened. So, we have to do something serious. We have students who were given huge promises, those students will never reach them. They, they were heavily, heavily recruited at first. I would say that in the more recent years, they were probably not as heavily recruited because the school knew they could not give them what they'd been promised. So, yes, it's a great idea, but it's absolutely not doing what those students were told, and... And we have to see some accountability before we can put $2.5 million per year, $13 million over time, $11,000 per student. Okay? So, so far, we've spent $44,673 per student who are there, those 291 students. So that averages out to not as huge an amount, $11,000 per year. That's still significantly more than other schools.
I see what ours get.
For something that is not providing what we want to provide. Thank you.
Mr. McMillan, with your permission, I'd like to make some comments, and then we'll, we'll close with you, since it is your, your district. I, I do have a couple of questions. I noticed that the, the cost from last year to this year went up a quarter of a million dollars, but we had fewer students. Why, is there any reason why that may have happened?
Madam Chair, Chris is moving to the lectern there, so I'm going to let him answer that.
So you're looking at 18, 19?
I am, and I believe I was comparing that to 17, 18.
Yeah, so if you look down at the very bottom number on 18, 19, there's a transportation number of $306,000. And then, in 17, 18, that number wasn't there. So it actually was there, it's not showing in these numbers. From when it was open, whenever CMA was open in 13, 13, it was, this was all tracked through the data warehouse. And when Gary Spencer, he works on the data warehouse, those don't pull the transportation numbers in for, by location at that point in time. So Russ was able to get us these numbers for this year. So there probably was an additional cost. I'll let Russ speak on that, but I don't think we can track, we know those costs at that point in time.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, ma'am. I think, and Chris, don't go anywhere, because when I get this wrong, you need to correct me. But the, the cost was always there. I just think it's not reflected in the numbers. And when, when, when Chris talks about $305,000, it's, it's difficult for us to parse out specific transportation costs.
Right.
Because when we buy a bus, we buy it for 52 miles a day, and that cost may be spread over three or four schools. So how do you parse that cost out to those schools? The, the one cost that is directly, the one piece of the transportation cost that is directly related to Career Magnet and that can be parsed out is stipends that we pay contractors to do what we call deadhead from different parts of the county, either to a distant school to pick up and go to Career Magnet, or in the evenings to go to Career Magnet and pick up students and, and take them back to their base schools or whatever their program stop is. And, and that total is about $125,000. So if, if you were to, and that's gone down over the last couple of years, that piece of it. So if, if you were to stop transporting for Career Magnet, 100, about 125,000 is the savings that you would realize. You wouldn't realize the whole $305,000.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I do, I do think, unlike perhaps a few board members, that the location is a huge, huge barrier, at least I know in the West schools that, that I represent. It's, a, a student has to catch a bus at 7:00 or 7:15, and then ta, you know, they're taken to their base school, and then they wait there for another bus, and then the school doesn't start until, I believe it's 9:00, 9:30. And then, and then they are late getting, they are late getting home. So I, and that's just what it is. But as far as trying to have a school like that and service the whole county, it's, it's, I, I think it's turning out not to be as practical as we hoped that it would be. I guess what I would really like someone to tell me with, I mean, I, I get the fact that they're connected to Pelosipi and that there are those advantages, and I appreciate Pelosipi being the wonderful partner they've been. But what is it right now that, that CMA offers that our high school students cannot get right now at any high school they're going to? What, what is it that, that, I mean, I, it, it sounded good four or five years ago. In the meantime, all of our schools are developing and off, and having more course offerings, especially with AP and honors, and even, even more career and technical training. So what does it have now that others don't have?
Madam Chair, I, I didn't know where you were going with that, but I, I wanted to recognize Cheryl Hickman, so I think your question.
Oh, hi. Can you answer that?
Cheryl can, can answer. And let me just say too, we, Dr. Wise is here, appreciate the folks from Pelosipi being here. And at any point in time, you know, board members have questions or whatever, Dr. Wise would be glad for him to make any comments that he would wish to make, or his staff, or whatever. So Cheryl.
Okay. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And I will answer that question, and if you don't mind, with your indulgence, I'd like to address two or three other things that may help clear up some things that we've been talking about.
Please.
First of all, what they can take at Pelosipi State is any course that is offered on their campus at this time. That's changed from previous years. Previously, they could only take those courses that were connected to their pathway. After much agreement with the committee that has been meeting all year, we determined that we need to open up that course catalog for everything that's often offered on campus is a choice our kids can make. So they've got many more choices than they would have had before.
And are all, and all those choices at the Strawberry Plains campus?
I'm talking about just those courses that are at the Strawberry Plains campus.
All right.
There are many more at Hardin Valley, of course, because there's many more students. But whatever is offered at Strawberry Plains can be taken by any of our students.
Okay.
And that, that is new and different this year. Now, let me talk about two or three other things, if you don't care, and I'm going to backtrack, so, so I'll try to stay organized here. Graduation rate last year was at 94%. Right now, we're on track at 100% graduation rate, unless something happens between now and, and May.
For how many students?
For, is it? 66 seniors in this graduating class.
Okay, thank you.
At this point in time. All right, we've talked a lot about transportation versus location. Now, I am highly prejudiced, I live in Strawberry Plains, and it's not that far, and it's worth the drive, but that's beside the point. What I can say to you is, I don't think it's the location, I think it's the time they spend on the bus.
Yes.
When that high school kid has to spend an hour and a half on the bus one way, then probably not that long in the afternoon, but still a long time, that can be a very mitigating factor as whether or not they want to stay at that school. So that, I think, is a real barrier that we have. Another thing, as we think about this, is, yes, we saw in the beginning that our kids weren't where we wanted them to be, and efforts were made. I can tell you, beginning that first year, we started doing remediation in both math and reading, we started doing all kinds of things, hoping to bring those ACT scores up. We allow students to apply to, to Career Magnet. We don't say, well, we don't want you to come because your grades aren't high enough. We didn't do it that way. We wanted them to come because they wanted to be there. So lots of remediation efforts have been made, and now this year, beginning at the end of last year and into this year, we are training teachers and administrators in the Avid program. As a matter of fact, Principal Hahn would have been here tonight, as would have our Magnet facilitator Cameron Mulchen, but they're in San Diego at an Avid, Avid National Conference right now, because we're trying to train every person on the faculty. And that is a program which will help us get those ACT scores up, we're certain about that. We talked about not selling or marketing or publicizing the school enough. We do tours all the time. We have trained students as ambassadors, they take parents and students on tours of the building all the time. But I do want to say something very specifically that I want you to hear. Comparing LNN STEM and CMA is not a fair comparison. They are worlds apart in what they are trying to accomplish and what their main emphasis is. They are both wonderful ideas and wonderful schools, but I don't think we can make a fair comparison between the two. The only thing we can really say about them is both are Magnet schools. But very, very different, and, and very different kinds of students are seeking to go to those schools. So when we think of them in the same boat, they really are not anywhere near the same. As I said a little bit earlier, a committee of Knox County school personnel, along with our Pelosipi State friends, have been meeting for a year, because we have been identifying the situations that we see that are problematic, and we have been trying to problem solve. What are we going to do? What would help? How can we improve this program? So what I'd like to give you is a list of things that we have done this year, and a list of things that we intend to do next year to address those issues that we have listed. This year, we added Dean of Students, and that Dean of Students is a position that his sole purpose is to help students transition from a high school classroom to a college classroom. That's a real transition for a whole lot of kids, and we have found in the past that some are way more successful than others. So our Dean of Students has helped that, and he has met with the parents of every single student who is enrolled in a college course at Pelosipi State. And he will meet with them again at the end of the year and as often as needed. And he meets with the students on a daily, weekly, very often basis. We've added Avid, as I said, and that's to meet the academic needs of the students. We have eliminated the pathways. What we found was even though in the beginning, we thought the pathways was the way to go, we discovered that they were really trapping students in a very narrow path, and that was not what the students wanted to do. So we have eliminated those pathways, now the students can take all the different courses that are offered. Now, what we plan to do next year, and again, I can't tell you the value of these Pelosipi State partners. We had discovered that our Hope Scholarship monies and other monies were not covering all the costs of the courses that the students were eligible to take. So Pelosipi has made a promise to pay a larger portion of those tuition costs for us. That should be tremendous savings. We won't know now exactly what that dollar figure will be, because we don't know how many courses each student will take per semester until we get to that semester. Pelosipi State has also agreed to offer more classes at that campus next year. And I can tell you that over time, while we've been on that campus, that Pelosipi State has added graciously any courses that we have requested, and they're more than willing to continue to do that. And then they have made a commitment to be more closely associated or involved, whatever you want to call it, with student advisement, and then to be present at the campus and parent events that take place at CMA. What we discovered early on was that we would like our Pelosipi friends to be more involved with what goes on at CMA, and they have graciously done that. So we have some ideas, we know that we still are going to have the issues of enrollment and the number of students that are coming, the issue of transportation, location, whatever you want to call it. We're still going to have some students who are not prepared as they should be, and we still are going to have some things we need to work through as far as what the course offerings are that our students can choose from. But we are working as partners to try to figure out what those problems are and then seek to resolve them as we can. Yes, it has been a bumpy road, but this is a new concept. Not many other counties in our state have schools that are anything like Pelosipi State or CMA at Pelosipi State. So we've just tried to figure out how to attack these problems as they arise, and that's where our partnership becomes very valuable. So I hope that cleared up a few of the things that were going on up there. Is there a question I can answer now?
Cheryl, thank you for that. Thank you. And Dr. Wise, please, please come forward and, and bring us a few words. I, I apologize, I did not see you in the audience, or I would have asked you to come forward sooner. For those of you who do not know, this is Dr. Anthony Wise, he is the president of Pelosipi State and been a wonderful, wonderful partner to Knox County schools.
Thank you. I was trying to hide behind Danny.
Well, you did a good job.
Thank you for the opportunity. Like many of the folks who've spoken tonight, we do believe it's a good concept. In fact, I think it's a concept that the governor's probably going to explore more in terms of providing early post-secondary opportunities. We know that Tennessee Pathways, that connection between principally CTE, but other early college opportunities, is going to be part of the growing landscape in the state of Tennessee. I think we've learned a lot about CMA, and frankly, we've learned some things as an institution, I think, that'll help with college preparation. I think one of the things that's impressed me, when we're assessing, to see if students are college-ready at CMA, we're doing that in their 10th grade year. We're not doing it in their senior year, as they're preparing to move on to a post-secondary institution, whether it's Pelosipi State or any other. We're asking those students to be prepared at their 10th grade year, and I think CMA has, has very early on started that process, but even the move to Avid is really showing a commitment to helping students get there. And I do realize there's some interesting transitions that are created for students who, who don't make it, as the students call it, make it upstairs, going upstairs for dual enrollment courses and opportunities. It's a partnership we want to grow, we're excited about. Other conversations we've had with, with staff of Knox County schools this week about how we can continue to grow our partnership. I do think it's worth continuing and seeing if we can tweak this, because I think we will learn things from, from this process about how we can serve other areas of, of, of the county and other campuses where we have proximity to Knox County schools. I think that, I think that's going to be the expectation from us, from the state, and certainly from our system. I'm happy to answer any questions, if, if board members would like to ask anything of, of me.
Any questions of Dr. Wise?
Was your question answered about what they can get there that they can't get anywhere else?
I believe what I heard was, anything that was offered at the Strawberry Plains campus of Pelosipi is available to every student.
That is correct. So if a student wanted to come in and, and do the transfer pathway in business, that would be available to them now in a way that it wasn't when CMA was founded, when you had those four pretty tightly controlled pathways?
And those pathways would, or, or those classes are not available to other high school students?
No, they are available to other high school students who want to explore that as a dual enrollment opportunity. Absolutely.
All right, all right. Did you have a question, Dr. Wise?
Well, and I, it might be Dr. Wise or Ms. Hickman. When we were talking about we're opening it up more, and we had these four pathways, are the, I was a little confused about that. Are the pathways still intact in some way, or we're totally getting rid of pathways altogether?
No, so if a student chose welding, was, decided welding was, was their passion, and they wanted to do that at that camp, particular campus as part of a student at CMA, they could still pursue welding. It just mean, wouldn't mean they wouldn't have to necessarily choose one of those particular pathways. If they wanted to choose a pathway in business, or psychology, or a transfer pathway that our, our, our students choose from, then they would have those options. But welding is still available, available there, our cyber defense program is still available there, they still have that option to choose that, if that's, if that's truly their passion and what they want to follow.
And I guess I'm looking more as an identity of the school, and we used to go out and talk about, we had these four pathways. It almost sounds like the school itself would not, and that's why I just want clarification, because it's almost like they can do anything. So they could do advanced manufacturing or teaching as a profession, but they could do business, they could do anything else, you know, graphic design, you know, whatever's offered. Is that correct?
That is correct, and I think that's one of the conversations around sort of the name change. So moving away from Career Magnet to an early college, because you could choose any one of those early college pathways, whether they're career and technical orientation like cyber defense or welding, or whether they're truly transfer orientation that a student who wanted to come there, knew they were going to go to the University of Tennessee, wanted to get a two-year head start, they're going to do the transfer pathway in accounting, they could do that, or business.
Any other questions? All right. Anything else? Ms. Owen?
Let me be sure I understand. You said that all the courses are open to all students who would like to do dual enrollment. You said that all the courses are open to all students who would like to do dual enrollment, regardless of their Knox County school, right? So, then, if any student from any school can take those courses, what is the advantage of being in the building at CMA?
Yeah, I think it's, one, there's more of a clarifying pathway. I think the pattern that most students take dual enrollment is they take, given the way it's structured, they take one or two courses over the course of their junior year and then probably take two courses, one in the fall and one in the spring semester of their senior year. So, again, I think it's an opportunity to work with Dean of Students at CMA and to work with a counselor at Pelossepi State to identify a pathway that truly leads to an opportunity towards the completion of a certificate or an associate degree or significant credit towards a bachelor's degree, if that's what a student chooses to do. That can be done, it's just not built in at other places.
Okay. So, there's, there's nothing that is only available to students there?
The difference is you're building in, you're building in a conversation around an academic pathway. Most other dual enrollment students just take a course or two over the course of their junior and senior years. Does that answer your question?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Wise. I appreciate you being here tonight.
Absolutely.
And to close this topic out, Mr. McMillan.
Thank you, ma'am chair. I want to say, first of all, I appreciate all the board members' comments, and I think there, there's a lot of merit in, in those comments. And I also want to say that, you know, maybe part of the problem has been that it was, the concept was good, but it was a new program and we weren't, you know, we kind of struggled as administrators to get things straightened out early on. I know Dr. Ryswick was not there in, in, over the curriculum at, at that time, and since he's become in charge of curriculum, he's, he's worked diligently to do what he can do to, to change that structure, and Ms. Hickman as well. But I think part of the problem may have been, early on, was we just, we didn't focus, and this leads to the comments that you made, Virginia, about, I, I agree with Cheryl or Ms. Hickman that you, you can't compare the L&amp;N to down here because they're, they're two different things, two different concepts. But I voted for the, the L&amp;N, and I think it surprised some people, surprised the superintendent at that, at that point, then superintendent. But, and I'd have people stop me in a grocery store and say, well, you know, I don't know. I'm, my kid, you know, goes to Gibbs or goes to Carter or will go there. I don't know that I want them going downtown. So, why are you in favor of that? And I said, because we're not large enough high school to offer, will never be able to offer certain courses that these kids can get down there. Now, they don't have to go down there, but that gives them an opportunity that our kids otherwise would miss out on. And I think that, that there's, there's some merit to being, you know, to, to this same thing over here. But I, I think we're, we're working toward the, the right, getting everybody on the same page and making it a success. It's been a little slower process, but I think there's been more focus on it the last year, year and a half. And with, with the new board and what I'm hearing and everything, you know, we just need to, I think the support here among the board, from what I'm hearing, it just needs to be, we need to figure out what to do and, you know, of course, see what, as I said earlier, about what the governor is going to do and what role that might play, and then just move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to public forum, Ms. Horn.
Thank you, ma'am chair. We have one speaker, Ms. Tanya Coats.
Thank you, ma'am chair. And board members, I'm going to be very brief because I can barely talk. Tanya Coats, Knox County, Knox County Education Association president. So, I want to say thank you for allowing us to have the opportunity to work with Mr. Thomas and Dr. Davis when we were talking about A140, about the workday. So, we were ultimately trying to dispel this myth that you were trying to make us work all day, every day and not having any breaks. The intent was really just to make sure that educators, as the state law states, that the average day for employees is seven hours, but we have went above and beyond of being seven and three-fourths hours. And a lot what educators had some misunderstanding about is it said the minimum day of being seven and three-fourths hours. We know collectively, as we work together, that schools just can't be ran on seven and three-fourths hours, right? If that happened, we were, we're running factories where people are just coming in and leaving on a time clock. So, I'm, again, I appreciate the opportunity. I know we, as educators in Knox County, appreciate the opportunity for us to collaborate and actually talk about that workday. And by spelling out that, we can also, when you see the additions that we added in there about what it means to add, what's added to the workday, about having staff meetings or having committee meetings, that is very intentional because sometimes people just have their own interpretation. But when it's written out, it's very, very beneficial. So, I'm glad that this is the first reading, that you'll have a second reading to actually do that. In regards to the resolution, thank you, Ms. Owen, for bringing that up because in our state of Tennessee, we must realize that we are very close to the bottom as it comes to per pupil funding for the state of Tennessee. As I know, this is not a challenge for you as the school board because you just don't have money that comes out of your pockets. But as we are embarking on a new governor, that we, it must be incumbent on us as educators and you as our stewards of our funding, knowing that we are not being fully funded. They think that $9,800 is, is pretty good. They think it's pretty good of actually helping our kids. But if you look at the surrounding states, and we will, as, as the months and the years go by, particularly probably the months, we will give you what some states are spending per pupil in theirs. We are hitting like number 48 in the United States of what we spend on kids, and that is just for public education. That's just, just not right, what we're doing to our kids. And we've got to do a little bit more. We've got to do, we've got to do better. And our, our hopes are, is that, yes, that our governor will look at this, and by having these pathways of looking at CTE, that he will invest more money into public education because we have to teach all students. And having just private, having these vouchers, whether it's for tag or special ed, we cannot set our parents up for failure because they want what's best for their kids. So, I appreciate the opportunity for you to, again, look at that resolution and make sure that, one, that we're getting all the funds that we, that are needed for our kids in the state of Tennessee and particularly Knox County. Because I'm, I'm just a little biased. I still think that we're one of the best counties in the state, but we have to prove that we are good stewards just as well. And so, again, I thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, ma'am chair. That concludes public forum.
Thank you. Board members, please see Ms. Horn before you leave tonight. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So, move ahead.
Second, we adjourn.